We should call the meeting to order the Floyd County Board of Education regular scheduled meetings for July 23rd at Depp House Elementary. First, I'd like to show that all school board members are present. Next, we'd like to review the goals for the Floyd County Board. To be a five-star school, have a college career grade increase of 90 percent. Remain physically solid and efficient, to have an ACP score of 19.5. K-Preps score of 82, and attendance to be 96 percent. I'd like to remind you that there is a clipboard on the table. If you wish to address the board, you need to sign it. Next, we'd like to have a moment of individual silence for while we are adjourned. Thank you. Next, is the adoption of the agenda. Mr. Atkins?
With the adoption of the agenda, there were mistakes. Actually, two mistakes. I think W and W D where Lisa has approved contracts. There aren't enough contracts to approve with that right now. The contract would come with the hiring of an attorney. And this is basically just creating a regular education position as a consultant. So it's just approving the position and discussion of possible action before adjournment.
I need a motion to approve the agenda with change. I'll make the motion. Linda makes the motion. Dr. Tanner makes the second. Any opposed? Motion passed. Next is spot on student staff community achievements. Team, do we have your admissions? Kyle Rappert.
We have an awesome one tonight, and you guys can see a little bit of preview of what they know. The project I was performing by way of inspired by and for students. And every year at Allen, the head chart through third grade do a performance. And the students wanted to find a way so that every single child could be in the performance with everyone else. I believe they started with hospital tables that are highly adjustable. And I think that one is, the two on the end, I think those are the hospital tables. Because they were adjustable. And along the way, they made many changes. That's one of the things that I think is the need is, that you may not hear that about, is all the times that they didn't get it right, but they didn't quit. They figured out what needed to be done, and they did it. And I think that says a whole lot. Because they had a dozen more to study, and they won first place. This team traveled to Chicago, and I'm told that some folks from Apple were quite interested in what they had to say. This wonderful team is coached by Mike Mills. And team members are Alyssa Dixon, Bradley Jervis, Olivia Dixon, Ethan MacIntosh, Reece Music, Keegan Farley, and Tanner Skeens. So tonight, we want to recognize Allen Elementary Student Technology Leadership Program for being number one in Kentucky Middle School Champions for sixth through eighth.
And I'd like to have all the board members to come for a picture, please. And I'm going to have Coach Mills to come up, and Ethan will talk to you for just a couple minutes.
Mr. Atkins, Board of Education, first of all, as a group, we just want to thank you guys. If it wasn't for your financial support, this group wouldn't be possible. We were blessed with a great amount that the kids earned, basically, through winning the state championship. But their trip to Chicago was phenomenal. And they represented Floyd County to a level that I've never seen before. It was quite amazing. The gentleman to my right is Kyle Shepard. He's a special ed teacher at Allen. And he is our head judge that travels with us everywhere we go. He understands what it takes to get up to this level. And these kids behind me are some of the most amazing middle schoolers I've ever seen and worked with in my life. And not just because of what they can do, but what they wanted to do, and the level they wanted to do it at. Ms. Turner, one of our assistant principals, has a citation that each one of them will be receiving from Senator John Ray Turner. And I call her name, you can receive that from Ms. Turner. Reece Music, he is a seventh grader now going into eighth grade. Ethan Farley, he is a seventh grader going into eighth grade. Ethan MacIntosh, he's our lone sixth grader that will be a fifth grader. Brad Jervis, he will be going into eighth grade as well. Tanner Skeens, he will also be going into eighth grade. And the two ladies behind me are our lone eighth graders that will be going on to high school. I cannot wait to see them in 20 years. They're going to be owning a whole lot of businesses, and they're going to be providing a lot of work for a lot of people. But I'm very proud of these are sisters, Olivia Dixon and Olivia. Thanks, guys. We hope if you haven't had a chance to see their project, please take time to go and look at it. They'll be set up right after the meeting as well. Take a look at it, listen to them speak. Because while we were in Chicago, we had people trying to recruit them. And, you know, people that was amazing. We did get to spend 35 minutes with an Apple education director worldwide. She went with them one-on-one, they didn't flinch. And they just kept doing the thing that they used to talk to do. But I just want to thank you guys again. We have a two-minute and 45-second video that Kentucky Valley Education Cooperative came and did on our kids. If you haven't seen it, we're going to take a look at it now, but this explains the entire project, the trip to Chicago, and these awesome kids. Thank you, guys.
Hey, we're here in Chicago, AEDS, SCOP, I can call it that way. My kids are Rocket and Roman. And you know, check this out. They're on ITSI, and this is a technology education.
I have to run you down, we just worked hard this hour this year for this SCOP Student Technology Leadership Program. And I had this wonderful idea of having to include students with special needs in performances. And they just began brainstorming ideas, and I came up with a project known as I can't afford no.
So this is our project board. We have a performing art show at our schools every year. So we saw that our special needs kids want to get the opportunity to participate in these shows. So we made a list of us in there, so let's play instruments along with the other kids.
Play, play, train.
There was a conference room that was filled with all these vendors of the top tech companies in the world presenting stuff for education, selling. And I would constantly look at the kids and say, you guys are doing right here what people in the corner are getting paid to do when you're doing it in those stores.
What I've seen from these students is a growth in them where they're able to share and speak and share their passion and feel together. And probably for me, that's one of the greatest things is to see not only them grow, but them create something that has changed a lot of people.
When we were thirteen, we were playing at Barbie Dolls and P-Sats, and then our children were there working for that and they were there. So that's pretty impressive from a mom's perspective.
And I just want to, they came back with the opportunity they give, and let's do the A-R-A to see this project. Not only local, in our local school, but worldwide, quite far.
We all said the bar's pretty high, so we're even in good shape here. It's amazing, very amazing.
Mr. Bell, I'm excited about what you're able to do. And as the board is sort of attentive, we play very small roles, however we're allowed to do is say yes, just fun. I want you to know that the experiences you sit here describing us, while we do this. We do it for our kids, we do it for the opportunity for them to have this experience to get them a better opportunity in the future. Thank you for everything you've done. Thank you, Mr. Bell.
Let's call a little bit, very thank, from you. Next would be work by Depp House Elementary School Principal, South Bay County. And I'd like to say welcome, Mr. Bell. Welcome to your new home. Not to leave you out, but thank you, sir.
Good afternoon, and welcome, welcome to your campus. First of all, let me apologize that in July, of course, you guys don't mean to talk what's going on. We're still working on our hallway. We've had a little setback with one of our machines that we usually strip forward. I called Greg last week and said, we've got to have some help here. We've got a machine down, and he called, and then two days had a machine back, and we're back, back looking now. And we're really ready to go and ready to get moving for this school. Democratic for school, we run around 630 students, a few can take a few. If you look at the statistics that we have, we have de-population. That's basically the whole school kindergarten through fifth grade, including even our preschool numbers. We're about 75 percent pre-reduced ones. 25 percent special population, that curates a little bit. I think the number's slightly higher than that, maybe about 26, 27 percent. But that again, plus we're still dealing with the three units that we have in house. We have brought in 42 teachers on staff, and overall, about 80 adults work with these students. A pretty large population here. Our teachers have been working hard all summer. We found a teacher, talked to a teacher yesterday, and told me she has already 36 hours of PD this summer. And that's phenomenal. Our teachers have participated in the Lake and College X training, which is a math training. They were here four days last week for that. We've got our literacy band up and going, a lot of folks have gone to trainings for that. So I've got one or two leaving tomorrow, and it'll be out three or four days for that. We've got our straight training, digital, we've got digital just today. And a lot of our teachers were there today, and I said, texted me yesterday, I said, it's understandable. If you don't show up tomorrow night at 4:00 p.m., if you go all the way to Warhead, it's been a day of training. It's okay if you don't make it. We do have several folks here behind us that were able to show up, and I appreciate them for being here. We've got several folks that also attend the mental health training. I'd like to thank our other principals. I know it's a few years from now, I know Rachel and I've got a great relationship, kind of badging each other a little bit about scoring and so forth. But we do share a lot of information with other schools, and I just, I appreciate the willingness that we have as a district with the other principals. I can call any principal here and say, hey, what are you doing? This is working for you. What are you doing? And they're always welcome, they're always sharing information with us. They're always like, come and see, come and see. And it's just, it's phenomenal to have that opportunity with the other nearest friends and districts. So just a lot of great opportunities for us. Our next generation achievements, a lot of things that you want to see in this. I think you guys have seen when you met other schools, because we do share information. We do share great ideas, and lots of them are all the things that's reached our direction, leading to success with the program. But we do spend a lot of time in PLC. It is something that we take on a great pride in. We have teaching leaders over each one of those. We're currently doing two a week. We do one that is grade level specific and one that's content level specific. And in our content level specific PLC, we're actually, this past year, able now to use the elementary school and get those folks in our content of the PLC. And with what's in for, and where's the great work with two, I ask that our teachers come up there and actually participate in some of their PLC. So the vertical lines that you're starting to see, or actually we're starting to see in house, is what I think is a social great thing for us. Technology is a big deal for us. Mr. Henshaw and I have worked for years, and Nicky on board now. And all three of us have a great belief in what technology can provide our students with, the resources. We have currently purchased fourth through eighth grade, third through fifth grade will have their own laptops. And kindergarten through second grade now will have 10 tablets per classroom, roughly one for every area at the top. 10 touchscreen would be, we just think this would be a very good resource for them to rein. We'll get those kids, them coming into school starts. We do have shortbread projectors in every classroom. We also have an enhanced audio system where a teacher works a microphone in their neck, and they can talk at a normal level. And everybody can hear exactly the same thing. We'll have that, we hope that this year, have it in every single classroom. Right now, we have it probably in about 90 percent of our classrooms. But we hope to have that in every classroom, and we think that's going to be fantastic for us.
By the beginning in school?
I'm sorry?
By the beginning in school or by the end?
No, we won't have, by the end of school year. We won't, we've actually had a funding, we think, now to purchase it for every classroom. With the incoming title of funding we have, we think we can purchase it for every classroom at the end of year. So hopefully by, you know, the end of this upcoming school year, we'll have that in every single classroom.
What other schools in the county have that?
I think in forty-five, I think most schools now have the shortbread projectors. And most are using the audio or hand system now. Yeah, I think a lot of schools do. I'm not sure where they're at as far as what percent of classrooms have those. They are, they're expensive. But we've been, I guess, about three years now trying to save money every time we purchase those. And right now, they were about 90 percent of classrooms. They're phenomenal. You ever seen them, it's just, it's great for teachers, it's great for teaching. Yeah, teachers don't try, you know, they don't try to voice that they can talk at a normal level, they're on. Of course, students can use them too. It's actually a student microphone, it's something to do with student presentation. It's just really, really good that everybody hears exactly the same thing. Our next year's research gap, RTI, something that we actually put a lot of work into. Our reading programs, we do have, we do a reading, we visited sixth, seventh, eighth grade, and that has been a really, really successful program for us. We do implement tutors in our classrooms throughout the day. We have a daytime waiver, and we have tutors here during the day, and we also do extra tutoring in the evenings. Of course, Europe is now coming on, it's going to provide us with some more tutors in house. I think we will have two different positions that will be drafted. Be two tutors every day after school that we can do in addition to what we already do to be at this. We use multiple forms of data, map, search, PSAT, or test practice, and intuitive reading. And we use those things for individual health setting. And we're now doing that pretty much worldwide. Our enrichment, we have a enrichment schedule for exit, we're working on that today, and looking at how we can utilize some of our teachers, even our middle school teacher done it before the fifth grade, to help with maybe advancing some students, working with social studies and math. And I think that's something we want to do this year is utilize our middle school teachers even in the intermediate grades. And of course, everybody's implementing a novice reduction plan, and we have to, we have to look at our novice numbers. They do exist, and our numbers, I think, are declining, which is a good news for us. We do, we do use strategic scheduling, the facilities to hand. We rigor differentiation. Again, we use individual health setting in all grades, and then for the advanced risk, we do focus on mastery learning. In college career readiness, we do have high expectations for our students, and I think that shows through our test course over several years. Again, we use ThinkLink data in case we need it. A program called BAR that we've had in-house now for three years. It's a program where students are identified that are possibly struggling. It could be home issues, it could be issues at school, it could be attendance grade. But this program identifies students who are struggling, and teachers come together and try to come up with ideas and strategies on how to help those individual students. It's really, really been a very powerful for us. Of course, ILP, we thought, we probably would do the ILP program. And now, our understanding is, I think Europe is going to pay for that. The Europe, Europe is going to fund that program for us, and I ask to go back to you on the ILP, because it can be a really, really strong program. Of course, we have college visits, career day guest speakers. I know our students are six grade, our students this year will be able to, my understanding is, all six grade, our students will be able to attend a college on college visit, again, funded by Europe. So really excited about that. We will have a college career at that grade in house. We will have interventions, the elementary arts interventions. And again, those things are coming to us through the Europe program. We do have nine students, we're excited about something that we're able to do this year. We will have nine students who will leave us around lunchtime, and they will take in fourth central. And while fourth central, they will receive free credits. Our understanding is they will give sign, Spanish, and geometry. The transportation program's been really good to pick up us, get schedule, get time for the bus, so people get there. And I'll talk to a couple of the parents, we can send later out to the parents to notify them of the opportunity. And the parents that I've talked to, I've talked to about three of them personally, and they're really, really excited for children to have that opportunity.
How are those nine students, Jeff?
Well, we start out, we, for about the last two years, we've really been pushing our advanced math classes. We started sixth grade, advanced sixth grade math, advanced seventh. Then in house, last year we were able to teach, last two years we were able to teach algebra, geometry, and then house. Last year, we were able to offer, you know, to give the children to high school credit. Last year, we were able to offer seventh graders an algebra. And these nine students with seventh graders who scored high enough to place in that algebra class. So those students now, as eighth graders, already have algebra one credit, so they're going to be able to go to high school. So we're still offering algebra one in house, but these nine kids are already advancing what's good for them. So again, I think that really helped with getting those kids ready for early college and any form of state or school credit.
So you hope to continue that year after year, like maybe more than nine students same year? However, meaning that class develops or they can improve?
Yes, those students are challenges. We encourage those kids to take the assessment, that would, that is competitive. We've got eight players, seven players, they're competing for those spots in that algebra class. And this past year, we had seven, seven, seven players who were able to work into those spots. So yeah, we don't, we don't have any of those numbers. So we, almost 50, 57 played last year. So it's just, this is becoming competitive positions, and I think once we get this rolling, I think our parents really want to get this program to push us even to better. And we're excited about that opportunity. But again, thank, but again, thanks to Ms. Forsbury and the staff at Fourth Central for giving them that opportunity. And transportation, you guys, you stuff into the field.
Your special needs is 20 thousand percent. Now it's all going up.
Your special needs kids are 25 percent. I'd like to know their college career percentage in the graduate survey.
Your special needs kids, your college?
They do have an opportunity if they choose to. They do, we're given, given the assessment to determine who gets in those classes. And they do have an opportunity. But anybody willing to have, allow anyone, refer to anyone, the challenge that says that wants to. And we do have some special needs students who do a good job to play. And we've got, of course, I'm sure, I can't quote you the numbers of special needs students who are in those classes, but we do have special needs kids in those classes. And in what way? But we do provide that opportunity, and like I said, we do have students who participate in that. So if you look at our achievements, things that we're really proud of, and actually, this is the goal point, this is the objective, this is actually condensed list. And I'll just kind of read through some of these for you. We were first in state in the VSW Patriot, in the SA contest. We ended up being 28th as a student, we placed 28th in the nation. And the amount of money that this young lady received, $3,000, $3,500. She had the opportunity to go to Washington DC and receive that, an all-expensive vacation. She didn't take her principal on, she chose to take her parents and stay in, oh, my God. Maybe it will get to you. We have four students who are Mexican state academic this past year. The Kentucky Association gives this education, distinguished student of the year. We had that student in house, and he will be presented at CAC on Friday. He will be part of the presentation, public ceremony, we have a student who will be presented with that. And my understanding is there's a financial aspect of that student and for the school also. I think if the school gets a grant for possible that. The KYA, which is something we really promote, have, this problem has grown over the years. We've got 40, I think, that went last year, some, a pretty good population, almost 50, 50. And we were delegate of distinction, we had a top-ranked field and an outstanding delegate. We have four students who are state champions in SCOP. We have four Rogers Explorers in recipient. We have a student who attended the Vision Junior National Young Leadership Conference in Washington DC this past year, and she's actually with us tonight. Our archery team has had a phenomenal year, and actually, four of our trainers in archery that we're really excited about. They did very well at the region, state. They qualified for a national tournament and qualified for a world tournament. And we're particularly, they had an opportunity to go, as their coaches come away, raised the money to give those kids an opportunity to go. And those kids are really excited about the opportunity to compete. And I remember coming back and talking to them about, they just, they couldn't believe they were competing against people from all over the world.
Why was there wrong competition?
There were forces that is actually close, they were really in local this year. So we felt like this is a might possibly once-in-a-lifetime opportunity. But again, some of the kids going back and talking about the other kids they were competing with and what they were wrong. Just, I was really excited and to thank the top of Michigan Kentucky had that opportunity. So thank the coaches, archery coaches, and the parents for giving us get that opportunity. We have two students who are legislative, legislative pages this past year. We had three first-place regional football winners. Overall, first place middle school regional football winner. We had two regional science fair winners. Our athletic programs, we have girls and boys basketball, varsity programs, we're county champions. In volleyball, A, B, and C, we're county champions. And I hope I'm quoting this right, Chris, and I am, I don't think they lost the game, A, B, or C. It's the first time this year in school that they've gone undefeated, all three, all three winners. Our showcase, the three first places, two best in show, our academic team, J-WAC champions. Their second place overall, K-AAC sixth grade showcase. And we were K-AAC overall districts, FBS and quick recall champions. Our academic team, again, has just done wonderful things. And of course, we have two national award certified teachers. And maybe more important than all of that, our school, of course, I know, again, we're getting away from numbers, and state's getting away from all the proficiency distinguished, but our team's score last year in the school was 29th in the state, Kentucky, out three, three of those schools. And 18th in the elementary. So again, just fantastic things going on here. But we attribute that achievement, the three of us, obviously, I can't say ball or dollar, we're just, we're a response part of that. I can't take credit for any of that. We do, our job is, and I always believe this, is to recruit the best and retain the best that you can possibly get. Hire quality people, and you'll get quality results. So we work very hard when we hire coaches. We have a lot of conversations with our coaches and our teachers about the right things to do, about how to treat kids, especially with our coaches. I know in the world now, where there's a lot of controversy, a lot of things going on, and a lot of parents get upset, and a lot of problems. Our coaches... Our coaches, we don't yell at kids, we don't abuse minors with kids, we work hard to make sure that we treat our opponents with dignity and respect. Our coaches will tell you that something, that we take a lot of pride in, that if we are a better team, we're not going to score upon anybody. We don't do that. It's about business, about kids, and about kids feeling good about what they're doing and they being successful once they do. But again, we attribute that to our coaches, hiring great coaches and great teachers. But a lot of that, again, comes from you guys. And I want to personally thank you all for giving us the opportunity, all the people in this room, I'm sitting behind me, board of employees. But one thing that I don't hear when I call the board is, no, a lot of times I tell people, well, we'll, we'll figure out a good way to do that, if the way that you want to do it may not work out. But, you see, it makes me feel a bit, think of fun, call and say, this is what we want to do, can you help us do that? And the answer is, we'll find a way if it's best for kids. So, that's one thing, the board members, and one thing you guys, and one thing the people that's behind me, the people, board, for giving us the opportunity, the success that we have. It, it takes a thought, it takes a thought. And I'm pleased to have the opportunity to work with the great staff that I have, and to work with you guys, community working. So, thank you guys. Any questions for us? Great teachers, great teachers, great kids, great community.
Any other questions or comments?
I'd say, Mr. Ross, it's obvious you've got a lot to be proud of, and it's obvious by your presentation and it's why you top line your school that you are proud of. And again, thanks to say we're proud and, uh, great thanks you all for helping us in elementary. And thank you very, thank you to Miss Gerehart's student, thank you, uh, I'm sure you'll be a welcome, uh, part of this, this, this red team, this red team. Thank you very, thank you, thank you, it's precious.
In the idea of what we do, not that you're good, you're, you're...
Thank you all.
Uh, first on this report is Kim Waddell.
Thank you. My name's Kim Waddell, it's okay, I get called that a lot. It's okay. I'm from Houston, Texas, and I'm here volunteering tutoring children in the summer. This is my third summer to be here, and people ask me, why are you coming from Houston, Texas? And I tell them, it's because my mother was born in Lackey, and she was a coal miner's daughter, and when we were little, she used to bring us here. And as a child, I fell in love with this area. Um, I believe, as a child, I had the conviction of coming back and doing something for the people. So, I came in the late nineties and I volunteered for Christian Appalachian Project, and then I went overseas to teach, I've been to two different countries to teach. I am a teacher of forty-plus years, I am a special ed teacher. And I love teaching. I'm sixty-two years old and often didn't continue to do that as long as I can. I also wanted to let you know that my family is very proud because we do offer scholarships here through the George Watkins Scholarship Program. That is given through my sisters and my daughter. And so, my mother was such a giver that we wanted to continue that tradition. What I would like to present to you tonight is a tutoring program that is a nonprofit, I am not a nonprofit yet, I'm just coming to present this to you. Uh, I don't know if I need to pass these out or, because this has, this is my business plan, uh, but it has my vision, my mission, my objectives, and my action plans. So, what I'd like to do is introduce you, uh, to Lois Newsom. I was, uh, you know, I've been coming here for three years and I've made a lot of contacts. And she has a tutoring program in Hyatt through a church for the children. This is a, uh, it's a program that's offered for free. And that's, when I came, I heard about her and I called her last year and I said, hey, I am wanting to create a county-wide program where children have the opportunity to have tutoring for free. I want to instill that education, uh, that value of education. I love seeing, I have a better principal than elementary school, and I love seeing, uh, the celebration of children that you did here tonight. And so, what I'd like to do is instill that love for education and to be able to have those children see their goals for the future. So, um, what I'd like to do is talk about how this is going to be done. And the first thing I need to do is to find where this tutoring program will take place. And since I've been here for the summer, I have gone to Wayland, I've gone to David, I've gone to Maytown, and they have all said that I'm welcome, I'm welcome. I'm welcome to use their centers. Um, another question that may come is about this transportation. This is what I'm trying to do. I'm trying to meet the needs of the children where they live. And I understand, I mean, I just heard it tonight, that there is a tutoring program offered in schools, and I think that's wonderful. I did that as a teacher as well, I tutored after school and did interventions with children. Uh, but I want to meet the needs right here in their acts. And when I came, like, this summer in Wayland, I went door-to-door telling them that I was there, knowing pain. The only children that I got were those children that were word of mouth. They got around, I was a special ed teacher, and so I, uh, you know, I tutored a couple of those, like, children. But my goal, this is something I'm really passionate about, that's the reason I'm here tonight. And my goal is to be here year-round so that I can direct this, uh, insurance and to be able to see it through. I've already contacted retired teachers that say they're interested, I've contacted Christian Division Project to see if we can get some, uh, people interested in volunteering. And so, it would be the type of tutoring program that would be very positive for the children. Um, also, I want to say everything else. I want to be a team, I want to work as a team. So, uh, I've been an administrator, I've been a teacher, I've been a parent, and so I would like to be able to work as a team with the schools. How am I going to know which children need to be tutored? So, I would have to be able to come into the schools and do that. Um, and then also, you know, when I look at marketing, you know, it's kind of like, well, I went door-to-door and I did get the kids to come, so what do I do? Well, I think the school could help me with that, and I believe in, uh, you know, marketing with radio and newspaper and things like that. So, if you have any questions, I'll take those down.
I'd like to build a, it's a good build out, and whatever we can, we like in school in the year, good to know.
Okay, thank you very much, I appreciate that.
Any other questions?
When you came to meet me and you said you wanted to help our students?
Yes.
I said, I'm willing to listen to anything that's going to help our students.
And I appreciate that.
I'd, you come to me, whatever, I hope that Dr. Chan would really like this program. I hope that...
Yes.
With, you know, there's regulations, of course, we have to follow those laws, and I agree with that.
Of course, there is, yes.
And as long as there are students, our facilities can be used as well. So, you let us know what you need, uh, through the winter, we'll have some counseling with you as far as identifying some students against that.
Okay, thank you very much.
All right, thank you. Beautiful, before you come up, I have to get to A, so I need to go back and get it. To A will be received for attending data security bed practice representation. I'm not using anything, being accurate, on the kids, there's usually documents. Kind of threw me off the page.
As I'm a reprieve, the technical requires the board to be aware of that security practice plan that we have in place for our schools. And, and I just wanted to go very quickly, this is, you know, in April building, and they did report in fact that their schools have come on the event and yelled with their employees, uh, and there's been some changes, and that date just causes what things are in 2019. Uh, as you go to the physical seat, this is the actual presentation that they will have, they'll have access to every document. What we emphasize is our back with our staff, and, uh, all the point is to change their passwords regularly, things like that, and I know it's going to be aware that as well, to, but not send any type of email or other type of email to someone that is not, um, someone that you may know. As you all, like, emails sent out from us that says they're not up to this attachment, we need to educate our staff on that, we're a bit more by people wearing, so we know that, and some of that they need to be reminded of. To never share your password, a lot of times we have teachers that will have kids and it's been logged in a hurry, and they didn't know that, we're reminding them of that. To never share any personal information online, uh, at any time, any type of TII, and have a person might train along with the social security that is appropriate possible for , uh, these students and, and for the future. And another thing, um, to give, to guide management, most employees have their email on their phone. And while by law we can't control personal advice, we can educate them on the recommendation that we would likely have, pass code on their cell phone. And we are going to have them sign off after this training is done so that they're aware of our recommendation from the security, at any type of TII, that may be an email indicating if their phone may be stolen, and if they handled the wrong, you have someone that should not have it. Others about the last slide discusses the actual documentation on, as an employee, the responsibility to keep information confidential and keep, uh, all online secure. So, this is our due diligence by KDB, and this is the best that we plan on ruling, and we bring this information to all of our employees in the district for this 2019 year.
Any questions? I'm just glad to see this after the trip, to see the county, I could recall, so this is some of the things that they kept in mind, so.
I have this question without taking a cautional little one.
Second. All right, thank you, Charles. I need to have a motion to approve the data security bed practice representation. Can you make a motion, I need a second. Doctor Chan, second, any opposed? Motion passed. All right, Angela, Angela Thomas, got an FBA, welcome.
Good evening, I'm Big Ruth Auger. Same as the good news, five, this is Florida, and I attended the next generation, um, leaders' conference, and like, the last week, they reported fifty, sixty, seventy, and learned thoughts, and hopefully will better lead, uh, looking at education subjects this year. That's my first bit of good news. Uh, second bit of good news, reflected as hosters, our lifeblood meeting on our goals for last year, and our main number one goal was communication. We settled, we made strides, but we want to stick even that as one of our goals. And our new goal this year besides communication is enter the teacher involvement, not just in SDA, but in our schools, uh, thinking our forces are, and last but not least, another good, good news on a big day, uh, SDA will have water, drinks, and paint respite for everyone. So, just a bye.
Any questions? Did your enrollment go up last year?
Maybe she's saying, you lost, you, you joined. Thank you.
You're welcome, thank you. Next, are there any students that wish to introduce the board? Yeah, absolutely, yeah, stop it. Parents, PTA, PTO? Stop it, count them. Pleasant faculty, please. Certified employees, MCDAT, Principal's Association, members of the Board of Education. Paddle format, any other? All right, there, that's everybody. Next is for acting official reports for a considered approved teacher. Commitment to employed county schools and the Kentucky Department of Education for striving readers, comprehensive literacy grant.
Thank this hall for giving us a little overview of the, uh, program, great.
Basically, I have my notebook left, insert there on my phone. The Rock is, is inspiring me, being more and more digital, sometimes I forget that. So, the striving readers grant is a federal grant, Kentucky does, I'm not even sure how many millions, billions, or maybe a dollar. And, uh, we basically have six district grants in Boyd County. Uh, we, they're by attendance area. And the reason being is the grant is first through twelfth grade. So, what they wanted to do was have a comprehensive approach to literacy, and it was part of first and follow that child, and that's why it goes by attendance area. Uh, the, the reason we only have two is that a three, to be eligible to apply, the high school has to have a certain free-reduced lunch rate, and Princeton High School's rate was just a little bit too low to be able to apply for. But now they are going to, uh, hopefully benefit from a lot of the things that the other schools are doing, they're kind of inviting them, including them as much as possible. The main goals are to, uh, chosen gains in language skills for four-year-olds, to increase proficiency in reading at all grade levels, and in particular, content reading at the high school level. And they want them to meet or exceed states or national benchmarks. I mean, as you can see, the goals of the grant are pretty much in line with the goals that we have had for years regardless of the state's history, the way that's changed. We still want kids to be proficient or better. This is a three-year grant, but you only get the money for two years, so you get so much the first year, it's a little reduced amount the second year. The main thing that our schools will be doing is training, and it's about helping, uh, our teachers understand how to increase those literacy skills at all these different grade levels. And the grant's about sustainability, so they don't want to come in and buy some program that you have available for a year or two, then you don't have the money for it, so you can't have it anymore. What they want to do is to help change the buildings, to help change the culture, to help change the teachers so that they are more prepared and ready to help kids.
These kids already forced us to create a district law literacy plan, if I'm correct? And every school has been required as well, right, their alternators are like?
Yes, we're still working on the Princeton High School area though at this time, because we had a, some time ones with the other two, we put them aside, we're going to work with them then to get there.
So, it sounds like it's more like a professional development for the teachers and, and, and skills in order to be able to continue this even after two or three years ago.
Yeah, correct, yeah. And, and there are, there are, there's going to be additional libraries, there's books, um, maybe some magazine content area materials for the students to read as well. But it's one of those things that, um, we did all the time, but maybe we didn't put enough attention on it, and just to try to help us bring a focus attention.
Anybody have any questions? All right, thank you. I need a motion to approve the district commitment between Boyd County Schools and Christian Department of Education for striving reading, comprehensive literacy grant. Need a motion. Can you make a motion? I need a second. Second, Doctor Chan, is anybody opposed? Motion passed. Next, we receive the report on Boyd County School Health Services for seventeen to eighteen school years. Does anybody have any questions regarding that report? I need a motion to approve the report. I need a motion to approve the report. No, no motion. Linda makes a motion, I need a second. Second is junior, any oppose? Motion passed. Next is five, action official reports, student support, B5A, the senior for the superintendent. Midrak, do you have anything to add?
Just a couple of things, uh, since our last meeting, we have nailed down our graduation rate. We're just a little bit above ninety-seven percent, which is amazing. Can't say nothing about what goes on at our high school, our RLC helps fast with our, our high schools, we're doing a great job with this. Here graduate ninety-seven percent of students, you're a success. Uh, as far as new goals, we're going to have new goals. We're meeting up at our retreat on Wednesday in, oh, all that Oliver administrators there who wants to work on new goals. Some of these goals, we're not filling in for them simply because they, they changed the term of how we're going to be set. So, so look, look at those and, uh, make those fit, what the new assessments will look like. Uh, outside there, I think it's what's on it.
I need a motion to pursue the report of the superintendent. Doctor Chandler makes a motion, I need a second. Second by junior, any oppose? Motion passed. A would be received utility report for Doug Allen Elementary School. Anybody have any comments regarding the report? I just want to thank the State Department again and very glad it's for everything that they do for our schools and reducing our, our energy and our cost. It's very appreciated. I need a motion to approve and receive utility report. Motion by junior, I need a second. Second by Linda, any oppose? Motion passed. Five C would be received construction manager, architect progress report. Welcome. I received a text from Kevin Teague today saying that he was very healed and that he was sorry that he did not meet his expectations.
Yeah, mad, yeah.
Got to get close. There you go.
Uh, mad, not healed, more than a year, yeah, but more lived, but not made. All the job, everything.
All right. So you're going to be reporting on the Benning Project?
Yes, yes, correct. Uh, of course, that's our biggest plan is getting graduations out there. I've been working all summer trying to get the rest of the building complete, uh, come get your corridor connected into the existing building currently. That's our big push right now, taking care of the work, attention of items. And we got the building, but it's all coming along. Everyone will have all that in place prior to school's work.
Okay. So the corridor will be finished prior to school?
Yes, yes.
Okay.
And we still may have like a few people that are working, doing little small, little things once school has started, but if we will have you.
The pencil is, the pencil is not being completed.
Correct, correct. And our biggest thing for getting in here, I guess I got to kind of speak for our behalf because moving forward as far as the kids have work.
Right.
We need to kind of, we need a little bit of changing laid on in. And I've got your number currently, and it is nine thousand seventy-one dollars if you want to send. That would be a credit back.
That would be a credit back.
Credit, credit back by us, not even what the existing had been. It's like it is, us moving the resource room into the current principal levels.
Okay.
Uh, I'm not going to tell that to you in some form, it's going to be credit if you want on this.
Okay.
But all we need right now, I'm sure we need just more money back. But I just need for us to keep moving forward before I can get in, get the tuition work done within the next couple of weeks before students do come back. I just need your approval as far as changing the scope of it, if we want to do location versus the old location.
Okay.
So instead of knocking all those walls down there and getting the front office there to just rock this office down here, there's a work right back there. It's a pretty good size of building. We're going to run our office, I should say.
You basically got a classroom, there's currently the principal's office, we pull some measures and all that. And if we were, we, we do all the work in there, but as we do a way to turn out of your admin area, you still have that to use for system principals, whatever you need.
You just broke us off, you're through that. And, uh, according to Greg, he thought we did that probably to save us some money as, as far as what we were looking at to do with knock all the walls down, destruction right there.
Correct, correct. Apparently, we have nine thousand seventy-one dollars sixty. That's the least you can get back, but I was still trying to get you more of credit back.
Right. So how can we think about getting that written out in a paper for us and for when you need it, man?
While I was wanting to talk to you tonight, just the approval on changing the location. And we don't got to confirm this number, you got to approve this amount. We didn't, you continue to get all we get back. And if next month you approve the amount of money, I just need where I can keep approving and say, go in here tomorrow, just start doing all this room, this is where it's going on at.
It's basically, it's, it's, it's change order, but not that it's change, or it's just a change in location.
Yeah, it's changing scope instead of being the old for location, it's, it's right for her in the building.
Okay, so something that we can go ahead and prove without, you know.
Thank you.
Yeah. All right. You got me, you got me. Um, but, 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 but. You want to approve any different locations to change the location?
It's a change in scope.
Change in scope.
We, we change in scope of work.
Yes.
See, with the fans of stuff, we're having a hard time here. That's what we need.
Change in scope of work.
We have change in scope of work.
Change in scope of work. Right. But I need to know how to write it and to add it to the.
Change, change in scope of work in regards to VR thirty-five.
Thank you. There.
Mr. Grant, would you also say that the principal already.
Yes, I know, and actually, that was a suggestion he gave. He would rather see it, you know, there because they still had, they were still in the process of people being on vacation and didn't let them leave all of the offices. There were several offices that were letting them in, almost not that, after this project. Uh, early, he, he recognized.
I was taking that for kind of a second, then both were about, we don't know anything in there. At part of the body, I heard it got came up, so we kind of been on standby, by the way, first we'll do the entire thing, even if it gets.
Right. He had told me it asked you guys, yeah. Hold on, I think it's the thing.
Yes, correct.
This came up to me, he's happy with, I'm happy.
So for the work, change in scope of work at Benning High School and that obviously is.
Well, do you remember?
VR thirty-five.
VR thirty-five.
VR thirty-five. I need a motion to add to five C, to change, change the scope of work at BLHS PR thirty-four, thirty-five. Junior makes a motion, I need a second to add that to the agenda. Linda makes a second. Next, I need a motion to approve the change, the schedule of work at Benning High School for PR thirty-five. Junior makes a motion, try to. Linda makes a second, any oppose? Motion passed. There you go.
We learned your money.
Yes.
You think you. I'm proud of it. Because you all need, need, need to.
Um.
That's all you had, I think.
Yes, that's good.
Thank you very much, thank you.
Thank you. Next would be five C, received this year two thousand eighteen, pre- audit annual financial report. May I be asked, can I please?
What you have in your package is the, uh, the, uh, honest, and that for four.
I'm sorry. I'm sorry. I'm sorry.
You never thought I'd say I did here. That's why.
Yeah.
Here I am, I'm going to take it, I hear my wife.
I'm just going to go back.
You never thought I'd say I did here. That's why. Here I am, I'm going to take it, I hear my wife.
I'm just going to go back.
Here we go. Take care of that on the cover. What did your board back at is the annual, the pre- audit annual financial report. That serves the annual financial report that has all the revenues and expenses for prior fiscal year. But it is not on the, the other girls will be in houses, generally. Uh, according to KDB regulations and accounting standards, we have devil, which are expanded bills that we have to take for prior fiscal year, but first you're on, you're just do my office.
How do you? Nope. Tennessee, Tennessee.
Let's go, yes. Yeah.
Well, they might be here. Okay.
Did, did, did. How about that? All right. Anyway, this is the pre- audit on Kristi O'Jett, it's a deep nature, still revenue to be received and expenses to be moved. Uh, as we went through before, we still have that, those entries we have to make on behalf. Of course, entries still have to be made to finalize them. We have these estimated numbers, uh, they don't account for anything as far as us getting money. It's money that's paid on behalf of the school district by the state. We received it in, we expensed it out, it's a wash. Uh, but as far as the preliminary numbers, our general fund will be carrying for five point four billion dollars pending adjustments. Uh, that is about one point four million or maybe one point seventy or something like that than what we did the prior year, but that's because we got five hundred eighty-six thousand dollars from the state in this last budget to make up for losses that we incurred due to the underlying minerals assessment change. Uh, in the initial language, we was getting about eighty thousand. They, they all said, uh, we got five hundred eighty-six thousand. We also done a capital transfer last month for eight hundred eighty-two thousand dollars and that stood us up at five point four. Have we not done that? Uh, either one of those items, we have been at about three point nine million, which is two hundred thousand less than what we carried for last year. And a lot of that is a result of assessments and the taxes and all those kind of things. As far as the expenses go, we came in under budget, we carried forward our contingency and probably about a million and a half to two million more, uh, and, um, budgetary items that we have money left over versus more money we spend on. Well, the general fund's in pretty good shape, uh, we, we try to keep it that way. Uh, the other funds, take care of themselves, uh, fund twos, restricted funds, our capital funds, we got to follow certain regulations with those, so they are what they are. And our food service fund continues to do well.
Do we know what contingency?
Do we know what the contingency is left on, um, Floyd Central, the, the leftover?
Uh, we're, we're still folding out all those. We are working with the Department of Transportation to get that reimbursement for the railway work. Uh, the BG one stated that we would be getting for than thirty-four thousand dollars, but when we got all the paperwork in and that was the total cost, it was not the amount of reimbursement. So the reimbursement's going to be about two hundred and some thousand, cause about half the work was ours. Uh, when we get all the final BT fours and BT fives in, we'll, we'll have a balance star, but it's not going to be significant.
Are these numbers with all the taxes going?
No, we still will be getting a check from the sheriff, I think, I mean, next month, if I was him, we'll know exactly what that is after the first month. I don't know what it is yet. They just told us we're getting another check.
Sorry.
Sorry.
Why?
I know. Why can't they already, um, go in over like two percent, three percent, um, carrying over? Does state recommend this?
Now, now, that's the budgetary out.
Okay.
Okay, budgetary, we're required to have a minimum of two percent in the budget.
Right.
Uh, and then when you're carried for, they look at that and if you're not carried for two percent, then you get into statement issues, which we won't say yet. But, but we're at, uh, four percent is two million, so we're carrying forward, uh, probably about eight, ten dollars a year.
Okay. That's good.
The carried forward amount. Now, when we say we've carried forward contingencies, two totally different things. Contingency's a budgetary number that we put in our budget. Our carried forward is the actual fund balance that we have remaining in the fiscal year. Yeah, we're, we're looking at probably between eight and ten percent, what we carry forward. But we turn around in budget, all of that except for about two million, and spread it out again and then through receipts and dispersals, at the end of the year, we see where we're at again. That, that carried forward money, again, that's, that's one type of money that moves through. Should we spend all of it, it's like having money in the shoebox, it's gone.
Anybody have any other questions?
This is not exactly, I like it a lot better than we have last meeting.
Yeah, I agree with you.
It's a lot better, right?
Yeah.
Because the last board meeting, the first of the high school, uh, at the time we approved the wages and you were looking so terrible. Uh, this is not exactly, yes, we like it a lot better than the last one we have. Thank you.
Any other questions? All right. I need a motion to approve the pre- audit annual financial report. Junior makes a motion, I need a second. I'll second. Any oppose?
Second.
Motion passed.
Good girl, you did a good job. Next year, next year we can develop better.
We just have to say this is some more to many from the, uh, my internal texts.
Well, that's, that's one, uh, we'll get more.
You can only hope. All right. Five E, receive report on classified salary schedules and or consider approve for post-changes to the classified salary schedules as presented. I was wondering why you weren't getting that.
I got a little short part, I need to stop this slide.
Oh, okay.
Uh, yeah, that's, that's one. The, uh, at the last board meeting at Prestonburg High School, the issue with our salary schedules was brought up. Uh, we approved our salary schedules every mayor, June, last, this year we did it in June. And one of the, a couple of the issues were brought up were about the classified salary schedules. We have several physicians that pay less than ten dollars an hour starting out. Uh, we also have several on there that are obsolete, but for reasons of the austerity and trying to keep them in life and, and have them there for a disservice, they were on the system, but, uh, after going through them again, we probably can, can delete some, we'll talk about those. And what else? Talk about, uh, the longevity increases and being uniform on classified and certified. Go ahead, next. After going through all of the people, all of the positions that we actually have staff in, uh, these are the positions that were paid less than ten dollars an hour starting out. That doesn't mean they would end up, if they stay a long time, being less than ten dollars, but this is a starting pay. So with these positions, and go on to the next one. Okay? These are the positions that we have no position for. These are salary schedules that we have had, uh, they were good for reference, but we don't need them anymore, so part of the recommendation is going to be to delete those.
This is based on the plan.
Yeah, that's, that's plan. That's just getting them off, because we've got way too many salary schedules.
So it wouldn't necessarily be abolishing a position, it would just be getting them off the salaries.
There's no position here.
There is some positions.
Zero position for this, right. Nobody in our district has that job.
I have that job.
It has that. All right. So here's the proposal provisions. Create one salary schedule for all of those positions that were less than ten dollars and put them all at ten dollars an hour. So essentially, we are setting our own minimum wage. Uh, we would revise the salary schedule for health assistance and increase the contract dates for the year, uh, because of additional duties and, and additional requirements and there's a lot going in with, uh, health assistance now that, uh, that they're required to be paid for within, than just the minimum wage. Uh, the next thing is we, we, when we move cooks and custodians up to a minimum of ten dollars an hour, we have their starting pay real similar to those supervisors. So in order to make a difference in that and for the supervisor duties, uh, I created a salary schedule that started out at eleven dollars an hour. And as you go through the years, and, and it's, uh, the salary schedule that's in your board would have had this in there. Uh, the remaining, uh, talking to the food service director, one of the things we tried to do, if you recall, several years ago, we had, uh, cooks that were four-hour cook. So essentially, we're setting our minimum wage. We would revise the salary schedule for health assistance and increase the contract date for the year because of additional duties and additional requirements, and there's a lot going in with the health assistance now that they're required to be paid for than just the minimum wage. The next thing is, when we move cooks and custodians up to a minimum of $10 an hour, we have their starting pay real similar to those supervisors. So in order to make a difference in that and for the supervisor duties, I created a salary schedule that started out at $11 an hour. And as you go through the years, and it's the salary schedule that's in your board book, had this in there. The remaining, talking to the food service director, one of the things we've tried to do, if you recall, several years ago, we had cooks that were four-hour cooks. We had four-hour, six-hour, seven-hour, eight-hour. We've gone down to about 18 or 20 six-hour cooks, and all the remaining ones are seven-hour. Food service director is 100% behind making all of those positions seven-hour. But we've got a couple of those folks who, for family reasons and other reasons, want to stay in that six-hour position. So our recommendation would be that all of those that don't have that issue move to seven-hours, but the couple that do, remain at six-hours, and should they ever leave the job, it would revert to a seven-hour position.
So they'd be like grandfathered in?
That's exactly right.
They would be, will remain what they were hired in.
That's, they would stay there.
Then that position would change.
The hourly rate for a cook would not change. It's just hours per day.
Right.
And then the final thing that we've done, and then the salary schedule's in there, is several years ago, we enhanced the certified salary schedule by creating a 25 and older step, and that was at a 3% step. That was under grade.
What about the 100 days, increase the 100 days for janitors and custodians? They don't have 191 days, right?
It's everything varying. Every one of those positions vary. Some of 185, 191. Each position will be different, but the hourly rate will be the same. It'll obviously can't lower it now.
The janitor?
The like see, the janitor, custodian, like they all, like they, like see what happened, like they don't have as many hours, like speeches they all have. The custodian and janitor, there's like 13 days less than on the right.
They have, what'd she say?
Custodian and janitor.
They work, I believe, 100 days.
She said they have contract hours.
They have contract hours. They have so many per year that they have to work for a next number of days, that's a certain number of hours, and over schedule at the school level.
And it's different at each school level? That's determined at the school of how many days or how many hours they work?
Well, they'll have 191 contract hours.
Right.
But we can schedule them to where they can work a couple of days here, a couple of days there, and it all goes towards their contract. And we have that, snow days, especially with remang time, we run into those kinds of things.
But the hourly rate...
But they do work more than the school year.
But the hourly rate would be the same for each hand?
I know. I mean, it's lovely, lovely, yes, I can. See, I have heard the story, clearly, okay? About the custodians. One time, they get one or two weeks sick, they don't get any money, and hardly get any food in their house. And I, yes, custodian, see, and then someone, they don't get contract hours enough, so they don't have a salary at that time. So I'm just there to find other jobs. And I said, they all work for the kids in our school system, so there may be more contract hours, days, and hours also. Like, see, the custodian, was getting like 7.5 hours, not that 8 hours every day. You know, everybody get 8 hours, the custodian get 7.5, 7.5 or 7.6 hours, not that 8 hours. And then, the contract days is not as many as, like teachers, as they have, they're like 20 days less than other, I don't know, they don't have that many hours. Is there any principal here can tell about that, the hours?
They do have different, there are different levels. If they all work as many days, yeah, they do work, they have 191.
Even they are the food staff employee. Worldwide, they are food staff employees, but they don't get that many contract days and not that many hours.
There are some.
So they are so poor, they work for our school system, and they don't have any food there out because they don't have enough days and enough contract hours. So I asked them, give us a good job, better than we have before, I still like what it was, our working days. You know what I'm talking about?
Well, I do, but I think you've misunderstood. All of the classified workers would have to work 191 days for they can participate in countering the retirement. We have 187-day school year, but we bank time, so we're only what, 170 some days?
Right.
But everyone gets an equal check every time. Their check doesn't go up and down throughout the year unless they work more hours. Okay? It stays the same. So there's no, this pay period, they got to pay, and that doesn't happen with all the hours. The only way it could happen is they would get more if they were headless time. We take their total salary, if it was $10,000 a year, and divide it by 24, they get that equal check every single time. Okay? And then spread that over the summer, even when their contract is complete, they'll continue to draw pay over the summertime. But everyone, if custodians get more days than teachers do, they all do. The only ones that wouldn't would be a substitute cook or a custodian. Those kind of positions would not, with other substitutes. But everyone has to work a minimum of 191 days for they can participate into the retirement, countering retirement system.
And their checks are the same every two weeks?
Yeah.
If they work their time, their eggs, their checks are the same.
Yeah.
Every few weeks, all through the summer, Christmas break, everything, they get the same check every two weeks.
Now, if they used all their sick days and their personal days and don't have any more time, and they missed age, yeah, that would be not them because they can't complete their contracts. I mean, that's just, we can't pay, the service is not rendered. But that would be the only instance for that.
How many sick days? That's what I was gonna ask you about, this classified. Is it the same?
It's the same.
Okay.
Yep. Policies, everything's the same, it's just 3, it's a 3.1 versus 3.2 in Austin. Yeah. All right, then, the final change on the salary schedule is that we, again, have we created the additional steps, we're all classified to have a 25-year and older step, just like certified have for several years. That's, that was a done back then, we done a flat 3%, same thing here. So if you look at the bottom, you take the number of others, multiply by 1.03, it should be that much. Now, the S and A cost for doing this, and one of the reasons that this has not been done sooner is that, one of the things that we've always tried to do here when it comes to salary schedules, is be equitable amongst all positions and all classes. And it's really hard to do, about two sessions ago, there was a push for a 10% minimum wage in Kentucky. I ran the numbers then. If we were to affect every single salary schedule and adjust them pro-rata based on moving people up to $10 an hour, and then adjust all the salary schedules after that, we were looking at close to $1 million a year. It just can't happen. So one of the things that we have here is that we are not affecting every single employee in the district, which is something that we always tried to do, but haven't done that for several years. The people on the low end have gotten worse and worse and worse. So this will pull them up to that base level, and then we can start working on making all the salary schedules more equitable. And really, what I'd like to do is to get away from having every position having its own salary schedule, and get into a level or a grade, you know, like if you're a cook, you're a grade one, if you're a site maintenance secretary, you're a grade two, whatever, and start lumping positions into 10 or 12 salary schedules versus the 30 or 40 that we have now. The cost, food service fund, because it's cooks, every one of them in there, either this year, next year, or the following year, or the next three years, will be affected by this change. If they follow in those steps where it may or may not adjust, which I don't think will very many months, it will be a little something. But over the next three years, they will be affected. It will cost the general fund about $110,000 a year when we look at the cost of the salary increases and the cost of retirement, social security, Medicare. That would just come from other things, too, but those are negative. The general fund cost will be about $156,000, and the longevity increases doing those 3% is about $31,000. Go ahead, next one. Again, the issues here are that these changes have a potential to impact over 291 classified employees, either this year or in the upcoming three. This, again, this does give any, or does give all the staff an increase, but it has potential in all the positions mentioned, and anybody that's in a position to get 25 years or more. We have issues with, and you probably see in your salary schedule there for classified, we've got some family resource centers that don't have, the family resource centers where they said, you get X dollars from this center, and you pay so much for your director, and the rest we depend on the students. And that has continued on, and we've had a fall over the board. I mean, the salaries are, they're no rhyme or reason other than that's how much money they're bringing.
Basically, have the funding.
And whenever we done a toll, it's all time to hunt. If we create a salary schedule, we could be one year, two year, three year down the road, and the center handing up on the salary. So that's one of those issues we really need to try to work on, but I don't know what the solution is. You know, but people tend to get in those positions and stay there for a long time.
Those grants lock them in, you know?
They lock them in.
Take their salary, that's the way it was written.
And then, when we give a cost of living increase a percentage, we would throw that on top of it, too. And then, if they've got increases in the maximum retirement and those other things, and it starts eating more and more into the money that's available to our kids. So it is one of those, one of the problems that we have with the salary schedule that maybe we could come up with a solution to, but it's going to take some time to work.
So basically, Matt, approved, we will approve this salary schedule. It will affect the general fund by $187,000.
Oh, really?
And the food service fund by $110,000.
And that's annually, that's, that'll be a year-long time limit, that's time goes along. And that's just what I put together over the past month, along with pulling that up on the last five, 10, 12 years. This is something I looked at for a long, long time. This has been way too expensive for us to deal with, and we typically will do cost-of-living increases, and that touches everybody, and then we move on.
What's your recommendation?
We need to, we need to get them up to $10 an hour.
Can we sustain it? I don't want to do something in the three or four years down the road.
Anytime.
Come back and buy us.
Anytime that we do, we do these things, and tolls and anything, we have to, we'll have to make adjustments, maybe come springtime, we start looking at next year budget. We just have to see how this year goes. It's unpredictable. We, I'll say right now, we can, but, you know, it's like, it'll rain next week.
You know, I feel like you, I feel like we need to, but sometimes when you want, even need to do something, the actual means of being able to do it are two different things.
I do.
So... You have other comments? Any other questions?
Good job. And I like your second page is so much better. Good luck. And to me, I would recommend all the board, we should pass it.
Recommend what?
We should pass it.
Okay, so she made the motion?
Yeah, I guess we should do this part. We should do better than this, like this, the beginning.
All right, she made the motion to approve the proposed changes to the classified salary schedules as presented. Is there a second? I'm sick. Linda, second. Any opposed? Motion passes, I guess. And one more thing. Let's not forget our teachers.
We're not.
We, I mean, last year was a half...
We done a half year for us, we didn't do anything like that.
I mean, you're right.
Yeah, we have done anything.
Okay, last year, okay.
We're off.
So, okay. You're on it, you said?
We're on it, but we just have to, one piece at a time.
Okay. Thank you, Matt.
Thank you, Mark.
Thank you. Next is action by consent, and tonight, I'm going to go through each one of these to see if anybody has any questions, and we'll approve each one individually instead of group in one bunch. 6A, we consider approval of minutes. I need a motion to pass.
Can we take a few minutes break? We have a long budget to do, a long budget now. Can we take a few minutes break? We have a long way to go.
Well...
Just go and take one little walk and buy me.
Uh, I guess we do that?
I guess we can.
Can we take a break? All right. Dr. Tanner? Yes, we take a break for five minutes, and I guess we'll reconvene in about five minutes. This, I guess. Motion, you want a recess? Can you fix the motion? I need a second. Dr. Tanner, second. Any opposed? If you're not recessed, all right. Motion passes. All right. So we will not be going on about, um, shot down for that. So we will do, we will pull, if anybody has anything to pull, one thing that we do have to discuss openly is BB, you, you, discussion with action of Floyd County's full attorney. We have already seen the letter stating that our attorney shall, will not be seeking renewal of contract medical services for the upcoming school year. So we, as a board, need to decide about certainly again, looking for an attorney for the upcoming school year. Now, Mr. Edgers, I want to turn it over to you. You have a recommendation.
Um, I don't know, because it's an action that you guys take, that I can make a recommendation. I think it has to possibly be a motion or a recommendation.
Okay. So I would like to make a motion that the board consider, and I guess, once it's passed, we will then contact the attorney and find out the contract information. So I'd like to make a motion that we consider John Earl Hunt for school board attorney for the upcoming school year of 2018, 2019. I need a second.
I'll say.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Next, is there any items to be pulled for concern?
I will reach out and just, uh, let it know if you're seeing.
Okay.
And, uh, so, work on, work on, work on, contract department.
Anybody have any line items that need to be pulled? All right. We will entertain a motion to, to pass 6A all the way through 6WW. Or H, C, right? Let's see. That is, see?
I have one question about the digital conversion.
I can't hear you because the fans are back on.
I have one question for digital conversion, please.
Digital come first, the letter C. Are according your influence, oh, be accordingly. Boy, we call digital, boy. What question do you have, Doctor?
I have one question for like grandparents, and sometimes you tell it you're working. If you're only digital conversion, what can happen if you have no iPhone?
I mean, not a hard copy.
Digital conversion, what you're planning like hand book, 2000.
The first would be, we do print several hard copies if they're needed, but we need people, it's like a pickup at the central office. All right. Need a motion to approve 6A through 6WW. Junior, wait, a motion, I need a second. Second, Linda, any opposed? Did you have another question? Dr. Tanner, do you have another question? Any opposed? Motion passes. Donovan, do we need a second? Don't think so. All right. I need a motion to adjourn. Linda, make the motion, I need a second. Second, Junior, any opposed? Motion passes. Everybody?